I have a couple missions in my life. And one of these-
No joke, I never did.
Really?
I never did.
One of them is doing this kind of stuff, so I really had a lot of fun with this and I hope, thank you for indulging me. And, um, sometimes what happens is the chair sometimes delegates duties to the vice chair there is to, to help in manage what they're doing. So missions are allowed to be a part of this. So information for you all, and the reason why we're here today is I'm going to ask Mr. Hebert if he would tell the story that I reminded him of yesterday about why we're a new group and what we need to do next.
Wow, big deal.
And action.
Um, turn on your microphone, please.
Sir.
Is it on?
I don't know.
Now.
Yes, I can hear you. And you see you sat back there and you were so quiet and so good, and here you are.
Um, well, Mrs., good afternoon, members of the board. Formal. Um, Mrs. Weitzman and I discussed, um, yesterday a story that when I was teaching grade at Inverness Primary School, one of the things that I did every year with my students, created a mission statement for the class, kind of what were we going to do for the year, what was our goal, what was our, our mission for the year. And, um, I had left, I was on leave of absence working for the D O A for the year, and, um, the students at that time when I came back said, "Mr. Hebert, Mr. Hebert, you know, um, our mission statement for this year, you know, do you remember? What, what do we do? How do we do that?" And I said, "Well, you're a new group of students, you're in a new class, you're all divided a little differently. You can't use the same mission statement from the year before because you're a new group and a new group has to determine what that mission is for your group. You have to talk about what your goals are, what your vision is, and what your beliefs are, and then make that decision for your group." So that's kind of-
That was good.
Thank you.
That was really good.
I've heard that story so many times. And when I approached the other case student, nobody said, "No, what did I say?"
Because that was many, many-
I wanted to make sure I was right.
Many years. Well, I have to share, I, I found, I should have brought the picture of Mrs. Himmel, but there was a picture of Mrs. Himmel, and she doesn't look much older, and neither do you, Mrs. Deutschman, and I believe Mrs. Bryant's in the picture too. You all were at the School Board Association in St. Pete, I think you all do that every year in Tampa area. And, um, I had brought a group of students down because they were talking about, uh, working and, and, and community members, and so we brought some students down that dressed up, um, because it all had to do with the Family Community Partnership Act. And there was a picture of, um, Mrs. Himmel and Mrs. Deutschman, I believe Mrs. Bryant was in the picture and some of our students. Like I said, y'all don't look any different then, and that was many years ago to even today, so.
Thank you.
I'm saying after he got promoted.
Well, thank you for sharing that story.
So I hope that helps in-
It does, because when I go and I talk to advisory councils and they say, "Oh, we've got a mission statement." I say, "How old is it?" "I don't know, it's been around a long time." And I always tell them your story.
But you do have to revisit that.
You have to revisit it, so. Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Hebert.
So, um, so what I wanted to share with, um, Ms. Palfour, um, is, um, a little, a little historical perspective on how we all learned how to do our job. Um, and one of the things that, um, we, I don't know, we have five classes up there at Master Board? Um, okay, so. Here we go.
Six.
The Association does a program called Master Board. And what they, it's a, it goes from forty hours, sometimes it's twenty hours, sometimes it's thirty hours, I have no idea what it is now. But generally what happens is your board decides they want to participate in this Master Board training, and we go as a group, uh, with our superintendent, because the six of us are considered the leadership team. And we meet with F S D A trainers, and then we have all these different exercises in group building and, I don't know.
And we flew.
Different things. One time we had to make animal noises, I don't know, just all kinds of-
Fishing.
And we love games. But, a lot of times what they do is they give us assignments. And the assignment is, and there's some of this stuff in here from those assignments, um, but one of the assignments always is in discussing the role of the school board and the role of superintendent, because very often, especially in districts that are larger and districts that are contentious, those lines often get blurred. So we're always asked, so we always kind of keep these handouts because they give it to us every time we're training. The other thing that they do besides is getting together with about four or five other school boards to, uh, do this training is then after we've had like two days or three days of that, two and a half days, they come to our district and they do individual training based on what we want. So we've done, last time we did goal setting, we've done, um, how to make important changes, we, I don't even know, I can't even, Linda, do you remember some of the ones?
Modules and-
Modules, yeah.
They finally had to make one up, the last time.
They made one up, because we said, "We don't like any of yours."
Because they're all well-paid.
Right.
And they did, they were saying too, that it, that, that this board has been such a high-functional board, I mean, they really did say that-
They did say that.
-a lot of times they're coming in to contentious boards to kind of bring them together, and this, they were kind of like, "You guys like move too fast."
Yeah, we don't like, yeah, I mean, and, and it's really interesting, because when you're in that room with four or five other school boards at their individual tables, you can sometimes-
You can cut it with a knife.
Ooh, oh my goodness. We're like looking up and going, "Phew." So, um, so I would say that we have benefited from hundreds of thousands of dollars. We'd be very happy to, with our knowledge, because, because you coming in the middle of the season, so to speak, other than the boardsmanship, um, training in Ocala in October, you're releasing a lot of opportunities to, to go back in Sunshine Law, roles of responsibility, all of that. So that's why I wanted to kind of share with you today, kind of some of the stuff handouts that we've been given in the past. And then because we are a new group, um, to go over what our expectations are as, as board members, what do we need from our staff, how do we want to communicate and get information, how do we, um, where, where do we see our roles, what do we want to do, what do we want? So we'll have that discussion, um, and then I think you've seen this before, that has all the individual things. Um, and it's a lot of things, and the, and, and part of it is, okay, how do we do that? So we're just on the accountability, the monitoring and reviewing and revising policies, you know, monitoring student achievement, I think you just saw a good example of how we do that. And, and I think one of the things that Mr. Schlemann was saying today in particular is that we do things very often at a much higher level than other school boards do. Orange County, like I said, they get it, they, they have their data, they have a hundred fifty thousand students. They'll have presentations, they, "Oh, we did one percent better than state much." That's about the depth of information that they get. They don't see streams of information, they don't see charts and graphs. They have so many kids, I think after a while you kind of lose track of what it is you're monitoring and how you can impact that. Our vision and our goals, we'll talk about how we believe first we develop those, um, we look at, um, how we are that link. One of the things that was interesting to me, um, my friend Richard Orange County, um, had the experience that he had to go around his district, um, and talk to two hundred owners of homes that were in a eminent domain action, which was the high school needed to grow, and the only, and they were landlocked. And the only way that the high school could grow would be to take the houses of the people that lived around the school, tear them down, and build the, the school on part of it. And he'd go and knock, I know it's his district, knock on every single door and talk to those people. And he said, "That's when you learn who you represent." And he said, "I don't represent the schools and I don't represent the kids," he said. He says, "I represent the public." He said, "That's who I represent, and those are my bosses." And I thought that was a really interesting lesson, and also a lesson in humility too, because you have to go tell people, "You're taking your house because our kids need it, that's tough." Um, so there's a lot of times that we have to wear a hat that maybe we don't necessarily want to wear. Then, um, also we go to the, um, the meetings in Tampa, um, in December and June, although I think some of us see less value than others. We look at the agenda and see if there's things that are graded, good, important. But we also go to Tallahassee once a year, talk to our legislators on those legislators' day. But what we did this year in particular, because it was so many pieces of legislation from two thousand, what year is this, thirteen, since two thousand twelve, I guess, with all the twelve really bad stuff for our, especially the high school graduation standards, where there was like, what, twelve, we had twelve different pages of high school graduation requirements. Um, we invited our legislators to come meet with us. Um, and also, um, we invited, um, Senator Nelson's office and Rich Newton's office, which they sent their representatives, and Representative Smith came. I don't think anybody came from Charlie Dean's office. But, um, it was a really good discussion. I mean, we showed them our data, you know, little kids, they will see our data. We showed them our data, we talked about the impact on our students, we talked about, um, the feedback we were getting from our teachers, um, about, um, the performance evaluations, about high school graduation standards, we told stories about kids who were, you know, at risk of not graduating. So those were really important ways that we could reach out to them and bring them to us, in our, in our terms.
And it's really interesting to share the data. We saw the data they were provided and viewed through their eyes, provided to them by their people, and sometimes totally opposite of the data that we have. And so we were able to see that why sometimes we disagree, because the perspective was totally-
The knowledge was different, yeah. They were being told something different than what, than what our experience was. And then, um, some of our stories, um, and I, how long have you lived in Centus County? Oh, okay, so you know our stories, because you've been living here, but, um, uh, Ginger, were you the chairman of the year of the great prayer debate? Who was the chairman of the prayer?
Prayer, oh. I was not the chairman, I would have prayed more, I'm sure.
This is how one school board member-
Patient's name was our chairman.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't know if you recall the issue, but, um, we had one board member, we typically gave opening exercises, and she was very religious, and she used her religious overtones in her prayers. And we had a new board member who thought that that was just the worst thing I've heard. And the first thing in our first meeting was, "I don't know how you can do that, it's so offensive." And we talk about public records, I have a box, maybe it's data of my neighbors in Lindbergh, we all got so many, and then we had a meeting, and we had a meeting at-
Forest Ridge.
Forest Ridge, and the fire marshals showed up because they wanted to make sure that there was people coming from us.
Our Wicken was there.
The Wicken was there, that was the Wicken?
Oh, yes, mhm, he was there.
That's what started him, wasn't it?
Uh, maybe, that's-
No, probably not.
Yeah, I think so, that was part of it, I think.
And, but, um, the first time the board member came on board, she walked in, we spoke in the meeting, and she handed all was in that by the machine, single space typed, it could have been eight, I think, of everything we want to record.
Yeah. So, um, so it's, yeah.
And that, that board member also, uh, I was hosting an event with one of the senators, and she came up to tell the senators to sit down, she wanted to talk first.
But, but the good thing, the good thing that came out of that is we changed some of our practices, which we'll share with you again as we go through a list of how to do our business. Um, but, um, it was also, um, after Columbine, Columbine was nineteen ninety-eight, April eleventh, I think, nineteen ninety-eight, so this must have been two thousand. Because she-
It was two thousand.
-got out or stepped out to do something else. And, um, there was a group of people who lived here who were, who were in touch with a parent organization, and it was a parent of a Columbine student, it was Rachel Scott, and her father came. And her father's mission had to cause talking to people about Rachel and her life and her impact, and he talked to us about, and, and they had a court dispute, and her impact, and standing out in the front. He talked about how she purposely went out of her way to prevent other students, especially kids that were getting picked on, or kids that were lonesome or sitting by themselves. And he said, after she died, he said, "He got so many letters from people saying, 'You know, I was going to commit suicide, so Rachel, you know, she took me aside.'" You know, that, those are the kinds of stories and those, the impacts, you'll never forget as long as you live. And so that's a good thing that came out of that. But, um, but I think we all learned a real important lesson from that, is that we can have a huge impact, right, that we have, you can imagine, in a meeting. Um, you know, sometimes like people can help in arms, not something that we do or say. And, uh, so being in the public and the microphone, and now we have TV where we didn't have before, we're very exposed. And I'm sure that I'll read comments tomorrow in the papers. But, um, so, you know, those are kind of our stories.
Or did we see?
Well, no, I didn't.
Well, we did, sometimes.
You can't unring a bell.
No, we can't unring them. And then, it was a twist. And then the other important thing I think that this board has done, um, that left a lasting impression, a lasting legacy, I think, would be after the Homeless Elementary School-
Debacle.
-the debacle. Um, and we had, um, staff that we, I think we could say they were circling wagons, and we were not being, we were not being given information that I thought we, we thought we should have. And we had a person from the community who would come and scream at us, literally scream at us every week, "What are we doing? What's the matter with the people? How come you don't know this stuff?" And by the way, he said, "How come we don't know this stuff?" And, um, we formed our own Blue Ribbon Committee of, of citizens, and they investigated this whole thing, they came up with their conclusion, because Phyllis Dixon was on that, um, board, and, um, Karen Gaffney, and a couple of people from Shippensburg, some retired people, engineer, very interesting town. And so that's where I think we really rose to the occasion in saying, "We are a board separate from the school system. We're not here to protect and hide anything from the public. We represent the public, and we need to listen to you, and we need to respond to the public, not to the district." Um, so I, so that was another, I think, big learning for us, I think, we had too many big learning opportunities.
Constitution.
Oh my goodness, this is the Constitution, that's right, when the people came and they wanted to-
I mean, it wasn't as big as the stuff you've been talking about, but that was mine.
-had their, had their stamp in it, and, you know, we had to draw-
Say no.
-whether or not to advertise your, your religious group or your political group as part of giving out literature to students. But, um, there was one other one, um, and it all kind of leads back to, um, how we respond to the public, especially when the public comes to matters. You know, it really becomes, it becomes very difficult sometimes. It's probably the most difficult part of our job is when that happens. So, um, so that's why it kind of leads us to, we talk about, um, what's our expectations, how do we manage our jobs individually and as a group, when we're faced with those situations that we don't run into problems. And I think the legacy of learning that we've had from Homeless Assa and from the prayers and the other stuff is that we seem to be very prepared now to be steadfast in our beliefs and be able to hold true to them and not be responsive to public pressure so much as, or, or having people, um, wanting us to respond a certain way. But, um, to being, to being very, um, I wouldn't say like-minded, but we understand who we are.
I think we're back to it.
We understand who we are, yeah, we understand who we are and how, and, and what our, what our job is here. So, um, and, and you make mistakes along the way, and that's how you learn, unfortunately, or maybe it's a good thing, I don't know.
And you've made me feel good about that, of saying, "Listen, we've all made that mistake."
Yeah.
"We've all done that." Because I'm like, "I can't believe I didn't say..." You learn from it, you move on.
Well, we respect our, our differences, don't we?
Right, and, you know, I, I think the Homeless Assa thing led us to Christopher High School. I mean, I really think that we recognized the weaknesses, yup, in our building facilities, um, planning and, um, supervision, and Bill became the guy on the sidewalk who, who watched everything we built and brought back pictures, and we changed the way we did our bidding process, and we changed the way we looked at how do we identify needs and how we prioritize them completely, from it coming from the building to coming from an overarching, um, assessment of all of our facilities compared to each other, and what, what needs needed to be met, and, and how we prioritized all of our funding in order to meet those needs. And it completely changed how we, um, looked at our capital outlet money. And as a result of that, our conservative primary and Christopher High School projects that probably we don't have been done, had we not changed that.
That's a real good point. If, if there's an error made or difficult situation that was dealt with, look at and see, okay, what have we learned from adding on to this to make it better the next step?
Right. Yeah, so there's a lot of legacies in the playbook. So Ginger, I will give this back to you.
Okay.
Um, and I, and, um, I think what we're going to do is go to, the only thing I did was I took, all these are from my two thousand and four notes, um, the list of things that we discussed and things we wanted to, um, agree on is how we wanted, what we wanted from the superintendent, what the staff needs from us, what we need from each other. And I just listed them here, and left a space for us to write our own notes about what we agree and what we think we need, and then we'll have Linda, are you taking notes too? Or, well, you're listening to us, and you can itemize it and give it back to us if we like. But, um, I think this is a forum that you can pass on to the next school board, to the next school board, to the next school board, because every time you have new members come and go, you have to go back and revisit your operating standards and your expectations, because they may change. You know, they've changed, I know since I've been here fifteen years, a lot of this is very different. Um, and a lot of it depends on who's the superintendent, what kind of relationship you have, we talk to people from other districts that say they're not allowed, they have, they're not allowed to go to anything, but-
I was thinking five minutes, some of them have to talk, um, at a board meeting.
Right. It's, it's all very different, it's amazingly different. So anyway, so Ginger, you just want to kind of do this?
Okay, I'm going to say what I think about chairs' responsibilities, and then I want you guys to, to add to it. The one thing that I learned, or-
Please, sir, is, do you have a foundation of, of duties already established?
Well, just-
Is this a fresh face? Is this something that we're doing for the first time, or have you guys gone through this process before?
We have, but informally, we never wrote it down.
So nothing's ever been really, so, almost creating our own bylaws?
Yes, we are, yes, we are.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
And, and a lot of this is stuff that we, when they've done Master Board, I got to do Master Board with them. These are things that we end up talking about at Master Board so that there's kind of an agreement of, okay, how are we doing business? How are we all doing business?
And let me tell you, when you go for chairman training and you listen to the other questions that other people who are chairman ask, I mean, I'm just surprised. Really? I mean, you know, some people, "I can't get information, how do I even get information? I can't get..." Like the guy in Orange County, he has to make an appointment with the staff member, days ahead and get it approved, and, really? You know, and you, and that, you, how you do business and then come out with-
May I?
Yes, ma'am.
So, okay, sorry.
That's okay. Florida School Boards Association taught me that, as, as the chairperson, that it's my responsibility to keep the meeting moving, and I do try to do that. I mean, you know, I, I want everybody to discuss, and then I want to move on.
Well, I would say that sometimes we don't want to move on so quickly.
I know you don't.
So how do we negotiate that?
I, I listen and I back off, and you keep going.
Actually, I have to say, and I, I've, I've watched when you were chair, and I've, and, and I was here with your chair, Bill was chair, and, and, yeah. And I think you do a real good job at keeping us going, considering our personalities, because we are not an easy group to manage.
It's like urban cats.
But you know, one thing I think Florida School Board said too, and I haven't had the, the pleasure yet to be in chair, but I, I can tell you as a new board member, Bill did it to me a lot, especially in the, in the early months, and that was to make sure that, um, a board member has an opportunity to share what they're thinking. And I, I can, I really appreciated when Bill would say, "Thomas, I hadn't heard from you." You know, "What are you thinking about something?"
Hey, someone that guys just started, is he? Okay, fine.
And so that, I valued, so I think that was something though, too, but, you know.
So Ginger, tell, um, tell Sandy a little bit about how we do our agenda review, because you're the chairman of your trustees, but you, but I don't know exactly what that means. I don't know what your trustees do, I don't know what kind of issues you deal with.
It's, it's the same.
Okay, so you're dealing with all the issues having to do with the school, the budgets, the policies, all that stuff, okay?
Personnel, it's basically the same.
So do you meet with the chancellor, is it, is it the president?
President.
Before the meeting and prepare the agenda and go over all of that? Okay, so that's what we do that too.
All right. Uh, board's expectation, calendar items, events, issues, reports, workshop topics.
Okay, so I will show you the calendar, because I am known to the calendar.
Yes, you do.
Please make me responsible for the calendar. This calendar we use to mark out all of the upcoming issues that come up on a regular basis, so we know ahead of time, and the staff knows ahead of time, um, when we're going to do something, when they should be prepared by. And this is our two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, okay, so we just started this school year with this one. Okay, and so typically, I don't know- Can we get a green one? Okay. So typically, you might write on them as you go through it, something that you want to bring up for future discussion, and you might use this to make sure that it's addressed in the future, now the chair and, or the superintendent-
You've got to track a lot of those things.
I do, I keep them.
Oh my word!
Because I want to know what we've done. Um, should be keeping track for us of those kinds of requests, but I always like to use my calendar myself to make sure that we're staying on track of all the issues that we've addressed. Like, for instance, we just asked Mr. Simon, "What are you going to, what other data are you going to give us?" So we might ask him again, "Tell us exactly which board meeting you're going to make those presentations in." And then by the time we get down to December, wait a second, we haven't had that presentation that we asked you about on AP, or, you know, the college persistence or something like that. So it's a good way for us to keep track of information that we want. And then also, um, the other additional things that happen, um, excuse me, the meetings, the parade that we usually participate in, I don't know what the budget's here for.
Penrims Day.
Yeah.
Be ready to walk.
So any additions, changes, suggestions that anybody has for this calendar, usually they give to Linda Verderami, and she, she'll update it and change it, and any way you want to use this, feel free to expand it or make suggestions, this is sort of just our working, yeah, exactly.
And, and the workshop, this is always a good time, sometimes that, um, and again, I, I, Pat was the one that did, sat down with me as, as a new board member and, um, as chair at the time with Linda Verderami, and, um, it would be like, "You know what? That might be a subject you want to have a workshop on. We probably haven't had a workshop on it, so if it's..." Whatever, you know, I mean, cafeteria, yeah, to say, you know, "Have we had a, you know, maybe we could use a workshop on that." And a lot of times we'll ask the board, "Does anybody else feel like that?" And then we'll sit there and go, "Yeah, well, you know, we've got nothing really in February, so February might be a good, or, or January." And then we'll, we'll plug it in there. So that's another opportunity for us.
And one thing I noticed through the beginning when I was on the boards and now, that all the, the information we have coming up on the agenda has backup. At the very beginning, you didn't always have all the backup. Now we have all the backup, it's rare that you don't have it, which makes it much easier for us, because we recue it all before, and then when we sit down here, we've already read everything.
We've done our homework.
We've done our homework.
Yes. Okay, submitting an item to be placed on agenda by a board member.
We had that question come up today, didn't we?
Yes.
I guess, Deuce is going to get back to us on that, about, well, I think normally don't we usually, if someone wants to bring something up, uh, on the calendar, put on a workshop, or put on a board for future, um, voting, then you would bring it to the board, and you would ask for permission for the chairman to put it on the agenda, and we'd buy consensus, and everybody would say, "Yes," rather than just be, "Yes, I'm a political designer, I want, I want to have this on the agenda." So that's kind of our practice, but like I said, there's security and issues that we didn't expect, and, um-
And in general, the agenda is the superintendent's agenda, is that correct?
She recommends the agenda, we have to adopt the agenda, yeah.
Okay, but that's what I was going to say, that's what I guess what I meant. The superintendent actually recommends the agenda, and then we approve the agenda.
And then the superintendent can, uh, place it on the agenda, and it's something that's real important and critical of that conversation.
And we've had sometimes where there's a budget purchase we need to do or something, And we've had sometimes where there's a budget purchase we need to do or something, and it's like, you know, we need to add this to it.
Unfinished business, questions to do, tracking, scheduling updates. I just go to Vergerami to help me.
You know, that was another one, in the very beginning, sometimes we would miss something that we wanted to talk about later. But now Linda tracks, it's just so she tells us, I mean, this needs to be discussed.
She uses the calendar too.
Yeah, you know, we have years where we don't rely on the calendar. We let the calendar slip. So, you know, again, who do we want to have responsible for maintaining the calendar? Is that something that we should say, this is the chairman's responsibility? Is it superintendent's responsibility?
I think it's, I would say it's the be the chairperson's responsibility.
I would too.
And I will tell you.
In my briefs.
Thank you, because you a lot of times have brought stuff up that I've forgotten we've asked for. And I know staff does that regularly.
They pay attention to what we say.
They do. There's a list, I think I heard something.
We try to get together the day after and go over some of the requests, something.
How were they saying?
What did they want?
We've had a to-do list. We've had a form that said, board member requests, this is what it was. When was it accomplished? You know, other districts I've looked at that. I don't know if you have any tools that you're used that would be helpful to us, but we've never had any that we use consistently.
I think that is the key right now. If you're not gonna have a tool that everyone buys into and uses consistent, then everybody has a tendency, it's like, we're too lesson-based in class. People have a tendency to use what works for them and it's a fantastic learning. And I love this tool. For me, I'll definitely use it. I need to revamp it a little bit to limit what I've been used to with the district calendar. I like how we have August and everything that has to do with August is perfect to me. And I'm building my own calendar so that I have my S A E C meetings from each school. So I have this as a resource, but that, that's gonna be on, make it through the year, coming back to what that comfort level is. So, and I definitely understand the approach. It has uniform strategies and methods. And I'll build off of those in a direction that's been streamlined for me. But other than that, I appreciate this.
That's cool. I think you've got board member reports because you just report everything you've been doing.
Yeah.
That's good.
That's good.
It's just that from what I understand, there's no timeline or anything. It's just that you summarize the highlights, what stood out for you. We don't bullet point every single move we've made throughout the past time.
No. But I want you guys to know, I was meeting with Dick Gentry tomorrow.
And a lot of times, if there's something to hold up, you know, I mean, to hold out and lift up to, you know, the other board members that we might not, we might have missed something. And it's a great time if, you know, I read an article, saw this, I'm worried about this. It's a good time to share because, you know, we talk about this is because we're in the sunshine. It's our only time to really, you know, talk and really talk business. Which reminds me, the one thing we, I don't know that we talked about is opening.
We're getting there.
Okay, never mind.
The funny story, Miami-Dade, they were, they're televised live on the real television.
Not pretend, okay.
Real television.
Not making use of pretend.
And I think, I think all the big counties, maybe how many, Miami-Dade, if you look, they have nine board members. And so they have to limit each one. They limit each one at the end of the meeting to 15 minutes. Can you imagine that? How many hours is that? And they give them pictures of themselves, like, they pair outs with the student, heroes with the school. Okay, crazy. And they have like all things that they did and it's, it's really out of control, but it's, it's like their time to.
This is the leaf that I got with my.
And when they told me that, so I'm just like, oh my gosh. So we don't want to do that.
No, we don't.
But we really like that opportunity to share because you know what? You know, there's stuff that, you know, there's, Lynn talks about books she's read and, you know, well, it's really good. Try to talk about all kinds of stuff, including reading articles and sharing it and stuff. It's really a good opportunity to talk and do that, so we don't want to, we don't want to not have time to do that.
Okay, addressing speakers and public input.
Let's just tell us, we need a policy on that.
Okay, hopefully you'll work on one.
We had guidelines.
We do.
Here's some information, and I don't know, I gave, I told Sandy that I gave this to Linda, Lindabee, that some of the training that I got as a new board member, because they won't have that again until November 2014. But it had things like good ways of listening to the public. And it's, you know, some of it's kind of obvious, you want to be attentive, you want to be giving them attention and so forth. The other is to remind us that that's when, and it's kind of the West comment of, we have to be careful then of engaging in that cross-conversation. And that's always, and that's one of do as I'm saying, or, or, not necessarily as I do. Because it's hard sometimes because you hear something, it's like, no, that's not what we're doing, or that's not, or you want, right.
But you know what happens? If there's like 10 people here, I'll probably use you guys as examples. If there's 10 people here and we say something, you know, and we, you come to the podium and we say something, you sit down and we start talking about it, all of a sudden they start talking out from the audience. They start starting up from their chairs and we have lost all control of our meeting.
That's happened once or twice.
Yes. So don't feel bad if we don't respond, but we've always been instructed by.
Not to respond.
You know, to say thank you for your input and you can always say, I'll meet with you later, please call me or whatever. But from the dais here that we should limit our engagement of people from the podium. And especially people from the audience because they don't have a microphone, can't record what they say.
And the public.
To the chair's responsibility.
Exactly, exactly.
The public should address it to the chairperson.
Yeah.
And that's where, then the chairperson should, should be the one that, that it's obvious.
And we should address our comments to the speaker through the chair.
To the chair.
We're very informal.
We're too informal, that's a thing.
I don't know. Now, do you have an audience in your meetings, so you have people come in in their room like this? Okay.
And one of the things that people think that, because of, that we're broadcast, is that there is an audience out there, like, you know. And there, there really is because now that we are streaming on the internet, a light meeting might be 100, 125 people, but it's, on some issues, I've gone back and looked and there's been over 300 people that's watched that meeting. And, and it doesn't mean that what we said always gets understood the same. And I've often gone back going, did I say it that way? I don't remember saying it like that. And so it, it's just, I would say, be aware, even when we think that there's only three, four, or five of us in here, it's, all of a sudden somebody will say, I heard what you said the other day.
You know, one of the funny stories that Tina Pinkston was a Alachua County school board member and she.
And her husband is a county commissioner.
Yes.
High commissioner. And she has since become one of the trainers from S B H, she's been on around the board. And she said, she was, they were in a meeting and she got a text message from her mother. And her mother said, can you sit up straight and smile? So she reminded us about intentive. I see you, you always sit up straight and smile, so I'll tell you this, but it kind of makes you think sometimes. If you sit back in your chair, you disappear. Public cameras, I think cameras.
Ludmily did that all the time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Public perception out there that we don't understand.
Ready to move on to opening exercises?
Yeah, the opening exercises, okay. That's the prayer issue.
That is the prayer issue.
And how do we solve it, Ginger?
Well, we, we all have our own different ways of doing our opening exercise. We kind of take turns and we take a month at the time. And I like having a moment of silent prayer. Sometimes prefaced with a poem. And sometimes not.
It's really warped over the years. I think we had both prayers and not prayers, and now we have some very good prayers.
And that point has indulged me as I've brought in a student or two.
That's the best. If we could all do that, that would be the best. Or I would just keep my mind.
No, you had some great, the flag, I love the flag.
You did a good job with the flag.
I like the flag.
Did they play music one time? What else did they do?
Well, we've had singers, we've had a cappella groups, we've had.
Give me a foundation for how, what's the time limitation and what's the purpose of the day?
It's an opening exercise.
It's just open a meeting, so.
Just open the meeting.
Previously, it had been, you know, as in county commissioners, whenever stand up, you know, how will we do a good business, you know, help us with our decisions and all of that. But Thomas Tanning has brought it to a new level. So he's invited students, our students.
Brought back to form.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and simple, sometimes simple.
Yeah, it's, it's just fun for me to go and collect them and bring them in and, you know.
Collecting children and bringing them in.
They'll just do, they'll just do whatever it says. They don't authorize an opening ceremony. So just be, they just always make that same call.
Yeah.
And that's all.
And they're very, very good.
And it's on the bottom of the calendar who's, who's the opening exercise.
October, I gotta get to work. I just saw.
Oh, you're next.
You're up.
No, no, it's the number of Sandy.
Sandy.
And it's, it's, you know, I love like, Ms. Ginger, she does poems. There's been really everything.
It's kind of a long.
It's, yeah.
Do you guys do your meetings too?
They're.
Do you have any opening exercises?
While we stand up, we, you know, we do the pledge.
Get to work.
Yeah, yeah. It's a pretty, it's a pretty, Robert's rule of order, what they're on. Robert, he's, he's the lead dog. That's the bottom of that. It's very, now, they won't have presentations. They won't have an opportunity for presentations from staff or students, um, depending on what's going on. But there's an opportunity for informal dialogue. And there's, it's very personal, but it is definitely driven by time. And it's, we don't push through things because we're watching the clock. But it's, it's very focused, very focused. And I have some on other boards and the board takes on the personality of the individuals that are participating on the board. So every single board I've ever had the opportunity to serve on were different. So there's always a basic standard format. The opening that you guys do is definitely different than anything that I've experienced.
Really?
The level of forums that I've ever served on. Just because, again, most boards that I've ever dealt with are very tight. And very, I've seen, just how crazy it is. But this is unique to your board.
We're very child-oriented. We're into children.
I think, and I like the uniqueness of the opening individual expressing how they feel the warm-up should be. So for him to step out and, and into the area is good. So I come up with something.
Other, other boards of other nature, I think of the school boards in different places, they'll each one bring a manuscript off of a parent.
Yes.
And there's all different levels of, so it's interesting. And then some people.
And that's been brought into, that's been an issue, we have training on that.
A lot of it's been lawsuits about that. In fact, right now, I think there is a hanging lawsuit about that.
And that's what's really great about when you go to Florida. I will say, those are my, I do love Florida School Board, are those module meetings when we rotate in. And then they might rotate to three of those different meetings. And there'll be hot topics, for example, hot legal topics. And it'll be what boards are facing around the dis, I mean, around the state.
One state.
They're really good to go, first of all, go, okay, we're not alone doing that. Which is often the case that you, but you know, the other thing that the discussion is, while we don't follow Robert's rules and Robert might be rolling over in his grave a little bit.
You get the job done. But why don't we need to get the job done?
I think because one of the things that even the media has said, who've been often critical of other boards, is to say, we talk to one another. We actually debate and within tend to try to find some understanding and respect and consensus. And what I do find when somebody said something about we don't always, I don't know, there was something, I just kind of count on everybody having different opinions and come from different perspectives because that's what makes it, it's very diverse and it comes, you know, it's like, unfairly sometimes we count on, okay, is Linda, how's she feeling about the guidance counselor side of it? Because you, you know, you count on certain pieces to be there. And I have, it feels good a lot of times to go, okay, I didn't have to, we didn't do that by ourselves. We did that as a collective.
I brought that up. I know you did. I'm talking about her.
The sulfurant.
The sulfurant that's.
Oh, okay. But, but I do think that's what we've, we do have discussions. And one of the things, again, Florida School Board Association, because they do do a lot of our training, one of the things they remind us is, we are the board of directors of the most expensive budget in typically, single budget in your district.
And often the biggest employer.
And, and the biggest employer. And so, you know, we have 2,500 employees. We have to manage the, you know, the policies and procedures and the budget. You know, for, was it this year, it's just about 200 billion, I believe is our budget. But the difference is even the board of county commissioners budget, their budget is broken into other departments who have their own managers that manage that. In our case, it's one single thing. And an interesting element that people don't recognize is, the board of county commissioners has a hired administrator. In our case, we have one that's elected and that statutory responsibilities are very defined. Ours are defined in constitution, hers are defined within administrative code. And it is a different uniqueness that we have to operate than even the board of county commissioners. And I, I would sometimes go, why did they do that? And now it's a little bit easier to me to go, wow, I like how we do it. It's not that theirs is wrong, it's just this works for us.
Okay, managing discussion, dissensions, consensus and voting. I did not hear you say, I did, I thought I heard you, never mind.
Well, I just have to say one story that always touched my heart. My first meeting, I had just been sworn in. I think everybody there is that, okay, what's he gonna do?
What is he gonna do?
He's gonna cross that dress.
Exactly. Well, and in fairness, I completely, I have a much better perspective now of understanding that. And I make a motion and it sits there. And it sits there. And it felt like it sat there for eight, for minutes. It probably was only seconds, but it felt like minutes. And Ms. Ginger says, I'll settle that for discussion. And that was to me, I felt like, okay, it's gonna, it's gonna be okay. Because then it wasn't about even just my only belief or my thought, it was then about saying, we're gonna talk together. And I just, I've always, you know, appreciated that because, and, and a productive conversation that Ms. Deutschman then came in and I thought, again, found a balance. That was a conversation we've, and it's one we'll probably still continue to have. But you came up with, I think, a, somewhat a compromising balance and.
I remember that.
I appreciate it. I mean, it was the beginning of work to me.
Beginning of you. Oh, my gosh.
Well, I think part of the issue too is, and you'll see that, like TJ, when they kept mentioning our name. He said something, they mentioned your name. So therefore, somehow, I think the staff, you just ask them for something, just one person, they'll go do it. And we have to, the chair has to be very careful in saying, we need to have consensus from the board before we ask staff to go do something or bring us back information or even go into their office.
Definitely, as far as procedure, if we could define that, because it does send staff along, Miss Chase, sometimes.
We don't want to do that.
I mean, it's not for, wherever it may be, might not be wrong with anybody else.
Right, exactly.
And I forgot, we, that what Mr. Clutter brought us, that was one I brought up in a meeting. But I don't, that I, that we asked in a meeting about. And I think Ms. Powers had said at the time too, I was, because I said, you know, is anybody else interested in that? And Ms. Powers had said, you know, I'd like to know what we're doing during those things too. Because that was one of those things, conscious things of.
Yeah, this is an area I really would like to see some real true clarification.
Yeah, and let me tell you, because I'll complain about each one of us, you'll hear about it, you're fine. Mr. Simon said to me the other day, because you know, I really appreciate in you, what everybody else drives everybody else crazy. I try to be crazy.
I, um.
Yeah, you ask too many questions. You ask too many questions. But you know, it is.
How you gonna do it if you ask questions?
But we really need to rely on the chair to, to manage that and to make sure that you're constantly seeking that consensus. And I think sometimes we get lax. We assume silence is.
Consent.
Not consent. And silence is not consent.
Well, just like, for example, the most recent issue, when I asked specifics about the common core that we brought up. And please make sure you address the cons that are out there.
Right, sure.
In the public forums. At that point, it would have been a good procedural game here if she would have taken charge at that moment. Okay, we've got an opinion out there. Is that the opinion of the board to move forward?
The ones that are going to take that action.
And that's a great example.
Move it into very clear action so that when she's taking notes, there's a very clear follow-up expectation from her perspective that the board has a consensus on follow-up action. So it's not just a shot and then effect. Sometimes I do sit, sit here quietly measuring the moment for when it's necessary for me to speak out. And I do a lot of homework before I come to the table here. So a lot of times I don't speak out because I have already burdened staff with multiple questions.
You already know the answer.
Well, no, it's not, I don't want to say that. I just want to say I've already, God, I'm Kenny Walker, that man. He just, I've just bit his ear so much.
Good, I've been wondering what he's been doing.
He is, he is just, he's been very patient. I just really have to, I gotta go to him.
You know, part of, part of the issue though is, just like I said, if you ask for information and you get it.
Right.
It shouldn't be a one-way street. So when you ask a question and you already know the answer to it, as my husband tells me, who's a lawyer, never ask a question at all.
That's right.
Well, but you, you've probably already seen, I don't just ask a question if I already know the answer. I don't ask the question.
Well, here's the thing though.
You need to.
But asking, getting the answer is, is informing everybody. Asking, getting the answer is, is informing everybody else like you did today. So, and so, you knew what the answer was. And our little quarter left, but very often, the only way for us to get public attention to an issue is to discuss it.
I totally agree and I totally understand that philosophy of questioning in a public forum. I, I definitely understand that. When I see that there's, there's an educational opportunity through questions, then I'll pose that. But at this, at this stage of the game, again, I know where I am on the curve. I'm, I'm the new kid on the block. I'm doing my homework before I come to the table. And I'm gonna drive the questions that I feel are necessary for the audience and for the board when it's appropriate for me to do so. And at this point, I'm, I'm going through the learning curve. This is an opportunity for me to get fair expectations, not only for myself, but for my, um, bond members too, so. And that, that I think is the area that I think we've all talked, that we can agree that if we ask staff to do something as an individual, chair's gonna come back, clarify that it's a consensus and then it's a clear expectation that it's not gonna go in minutes.
And, and you know, we've, and this, I know. The way it was explained to me, and I'm, I'm expressing this so that, so that we again, clarify, was that if it was, hey, Mr. Simon, can you give me that report that you did during the meeting? That's not new work, that's not new information. It's sending me an email of an existing report. Because I'm blonde and I lost it, which I shouldn't have, but I, you know.
You have your iPad.
But as a board member, I should never, I should never have a conversation with, I'm using Mr. Simon as an example, that says, can you pull together all the numbers of the da-da-da-da-da? That's something that I need to come to the board meeting and say, I'm interested in this. Does any of the other board members have any, do they, they feel there's a value in getting that, that work done? And there's, and sometimes there's a, yeah, I don't know. You, you've done that, but it's like, I don't need that. And, and then there's times where, you know, it'd be like, yeah, we'd get to know what, what we're doing on that. On the other hand, it, there's times where I have, and this is, I guess, that, I hate to say gray area, but to say, Mark, did we ever do a report or did we do one already? And if it's one that I just didn't know that they maybe put together, I've not thought that I created new work on that. If it's one they've already done and they're just sending it to me, as opposed to one maybe they've even presented.
Right.
But if it is any new creation of work or any staff work, it's gotta come to the board. Is that pretty much?
Yeah, you should always go through the superintendent, but I think that's on another page. So, okay, we're on the next one.
Okay.
Well, that's a question, you're saying, in a board meeting, we ask the superintendent for it?
No, you can go, you know, and we'll talk about that too.
Okay.
Individually, we should direct our, our questions to the superintendent for information and stuff.
Okay, workshops, work session, purpose, value, outcomes.
That was one of the things that I wondered at that meeting. Sam, you remember Andrea Whitley? She was a school board member from Hope County, she was the president of SBA. And one of the training sessions, she says, you know, some of the most valuable discussions that the board has is in sessions we call work sessions. It's just time for the boards to talk amongst themselves about things that they're concerned about or issues that come up. And workshops are directed, we just got directed a lot of information, it was, you know, it was a dialogue. But it was more of them giving us information and we're responding to it. But that was already pre-planned, pre-set, pre-identified, what, what was the discussion gonna be about? So work sessions are very valuable to implant, I don't know how many, every often, we, we kinda got away from them.
We started and we get away from them.
This is kinda almost like a, a work session in a way that it's just discussion amongst ourselves. But just open-ended agenda, nothing on it, here's your time to talk, talk amongst yourselves, see, you know, see what takes you. And we need, I think, I think they were valuable.
And we just like goes on to the workshop.
We have, we have.
And you didn't really close it, just run into.
But now we've, now we've got the meeting before.
Yeah.
Then the work session.
And we're getting a business meeting afterwards and now we had our, you know, and then we had all to kind of, so our agenda's kinda losing track of that open space time. I don't know if you all still wanna do that or how often you wanna do that.
I don't know how often, but I know they're valuable.
Yes, they are.
An opportunity to do it. It's just that old trying to fit it all into the.
It's nice to go to a stage like that.
And we can notice that and do it that way, because we've had meetings up there. We just have to notice from this time to this time, we'll be up there.
Yeah. That was something we learned from another district, we never did that before, so that was very effective.
Okay, prior distribution of backup materials, consent agenda and poll items.
All right, so this was about, how soon do you all need your backup materials by? And I gotta say for myself, I should have, no, there's a lot of stuff. So distracted. So I need, if I, if you're gonna give me a big document, I want it at home, I want it beforehand, I want it quiet so I can concentrate on what I'm seeing. For years, I'm twice the staff and shelf, but the big stack of papers on the lap. And unless you ask for it, you can get it, right, next to curate us, why copy all that stuff that you weren't gonna give to us, or only if asked? And a lot of times, if we can get a backup material until the time that they have handed out to you with their addressing the issue. So we've really tried to work hard on having on backup material at a time, although I must say, the budget divided at the last minute. The very last minute. So, I mean, again, that's the direction of the board and the private work, what do you all read? What message do we need to send to the superintendent, saying this is sort of our deadline, we must have information by?
I think we get our agenda, we can advance. And I think we ought to get everything we can advance.
I agree with you, because it's very important to have that tool to digest and give a couple days, read it again.
Now, in the, in the event of, you know, something happening, it could be late, you know what I'm saying? But if, if Kenny Blocker was gonna give us the budget and we were waiting on something from the state, you know, couldn't be helped.
Somebody gave us some stuff today, and you take the notes on it, so I know you were.
Oh, um, that was the, that was the, but that was the workshop stuff, um, yes.
It was a flow sheet or something. Oh, yeah, acceleration.
Oh, and the acceleration.
Yeah.
Yeah, I forgot.
That would've been good to have, always.
The, now that flow sheet.
You were distracted.
Just, I, and I meant to ask him, but I'm pretty sure that's in the pupil progression plan already that we approved.
Oh, the elementary? We haven't, okay.
No, I meant from last year. It's the same flow chart.
Oh, okay.
It was just that I think he was having it available to talk to us about.
I think you need to ask me to vote it on, we have to have.
I agree.
When they're doing a presentation like that, and I can see where it would really be moving, like to box them in. Because a lot of times, you get something creative, something will hit you in the middle of the night before the next.
Absolutely. Or the next night.
Yeah.
We've all had the experience when we walk out the door and somebody lives in the hallway and says, did you know? Now, did you all just get this for the first time today, the data, the data presentation? You didn't see that before? So that's something probably that I think
But it's workshop.
Perfecting it today.
Because the workshop stuff, I always was under the impression that they're working on it, sometimes up to the day at a workshop.
Yeah, I think so, but you know, I have to speak to myself, I really need time to look at something.
Oh, I, I do, but I just didn't know if that was just me.
It could be something under the wing, and I don't want to set them up without this and they need to research it.
But just have time to read it so you can think of your question.
And maybe we'll enhance my questions if we get time to look at it.
I will tell you, if you all have requested that presentation before today's meeting completed, we wouldn't have had that workshop today.
Yeah, or he could send it to the.
Because it was just that time of the year, that was the issue.
Yeah, the draft was not completed.
I mean, he could send a partial.
Yeah. Maybe we'll say the same thing with the golden rock, you know, we, we just recently, you started getting the golden rock sent to us the day ahead of time via email, and it's still not completely formed yet.
But it helps.
It, it's a big help.
Why do we wanna do that?
What, to get it ahead of time?
Yeah.
Because somebody on the, y'all.
I don't remember when, who or what, but it was to say that same thing so that we weren't.
To give us time.
Because what happens is, is it's changing from the time it's done.
Maybe.
Right. So this just has allowed it, because we've had a couple, we have had a couple of people that were kind of.
Do we still want them to do that? We want them to continue that practice?
I didn't think it was a big, I mean, if it's a time concern, I think it would.
It's that hard to do.
But if it's not a big deal, then I just assume continue.
Me too. It's three.
Okay.
I can count to three.
Another thing Ginger taught me, how to count to three.
Okay, school district goals, updates on progress.
We haven't done this in a while.
No, we've not.
You know, that I thought was one of the best things, didn't we do it in February? Oh, yeah, school, school board goals.
There's school board goals, but there's district goals, there's different, there's this strategic break. Now, you know, the funny thing is, the district really hasn't done a big strategic plan, you do it individually by, um, by department now.
Correct, they update.
But we haven't had an update in a long time, I don't know, are we, didn't we have it on the calendar or strategic plan update?
Just saw the, I just saw the school board goals.
Yeah, it kinda got, it got lost in the shuffle after a while.
And the school board goals, that was really never completed, was it?
Well, that's different, let's finish the strategic goal for the district though. And he said, if we as a board, they have different goals from the district, which we do.
Well, the strati, I, I guess, then.
The strategic goals of the, of the district and you compartmentalize them. We used to get updates on what they were on your programs and then, you know, where are you going nearby? And we haven't, we actually haven't had any of those presentations.
Were those the reports that would kinda have like a little graphic line or something, the percentage, and we'd say that we're, or they've had like an information sheet with it?
Like the goal and where they are with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll get this done.
Thank you. All right, updates on accomplishments, needs and expectations.
You know, the updates on, I, I don't know if this is the same thing, but one of the things that I, and I think most of the board knows, one of the things, updates on accomplishments, I, I'm just always trying to blog about different things because I just think there's so much to break about, um, in our district. And a lot of times it's to share information about things when we can get the public to be involved in legislative issues and the testings and the things that we are, um, on the same board about. But this has been an issue we've talked about, of how do we, is that what we're talking about? Is like, how are we getting our message about the, the successes of our district?
Yeah, exactly, and, um, and kind of, and the offshoot from the strategic goals, then, you know, what have we accomplished? What do we still need to do? What are the needs of the district and what are the expectations? What are the district expectations, you know?
There's such a overlap here between these two, this whole district goals, updates on progress, updates on accomplishment, needs and expectations, isn't there?
Yeah, progress, and this is, and this was, um, something that was again, an aha moment for me, that was really amazing. We had this lady called Susan, but who had worked many years for Edward Demy. Edward Demy's a guy who invented the total quality management system. He, he went to Japan after World War II and helped them develop actually the automotive industry. Okay, so she was his right-hand person, so she was an amazing organizational strategist. And she came and led our district through, um, our strategic planning a number of times, including a lot of community input and involvement and all that kinda stuff. And, and she also did the training for the entire state of New Mexico and she, school system. And she used the example of looking at progress versus accomplishments in this way. They had, uh, she was with an individual school that said, we're gonna, we're having a problem with, um, tenth grade kids who are failing U.S. history. So we're going to, um, we're gonna, we're gonna have call-outs to parents to remind them of tests and upcoming homework. We're gonna look at the text, lexiles, all those levels of our textbook. We're gonna go back and review this, review that, we're gonna have in-service, we're gonna do all these things. And then they had what happened as a result. You know, the scores went up, the scores went down, the kids passed, the kids didn't pass. But the question was, well, how do you know any of the things that we did had an impact on what happened? Did we do them? And that was the first question is, did we do them? And the first question that they asked about calling the parents, they go, oh, we forgot, we didn't do it. So they were trying to measure the effectiveness of that strategy before checking about whether or not they even did it or not. So on all of our school improvement plans and all the things that we were tracking, goals and accomplishments, we added a separate column called progress. Because we wanted to monitor and make sure that it was even being done. And I think we here at Christopher Middle School, I don't know if you were still there when Gina Tullman developed, it was like almost a one-page, um, report and it had all the individual school improvement goals and it had each quarter, uh, check marks, whether or not it was done or not. Yeah, how far it was completed and then, and then what were the results? Because if you have results for something that hasn't been done, of course, there's no validity. So that progress, number one, and the accomplishments, number two, are two different things that we need to look at. So we have a goal, we have a strategy, did we do it? And if we did do it, how did it work? If we didn't do it, why didn't we do it?
It's something I'm saying, intertwined.
The intertwined, but they're all, but they're also separate. Exactly.
The, one of the challenges we have said that we have, and, and part of its resources, is nearly most other government agency of our size has a public informations officer that is providing that information out there.
Same app too.
I was just gonna say that, thank you. And the trouble, the challenge that we've had is while we recognize that's a need, it's been okay and who do we, you know, we don't, we haven't really had the resources without taking it away from our students, which has always been our primary focus. So that's, that has been, I think, our challenge because there's so many times, like today, we know, you know, we were top leaders in games and math. You know, that's one of those, to me, press, press releases that we.
Do we have electronic sign up? We have to.
Not here?
No. We need to get.
If I wanted, WTI.
Electronic signs around the county and blast out little messages like this?
It, that's, those are those things, but even.
If that one didn't get it.
You know, I, I will say, I think Chris Gangler does a great job with the Facebook. But some of the pieces is we get, we have great visual, but we don't sometimes show out that data. And, you know, like, again, Citra scores, blah, blah, blah. I often, you know, if I'm needing to feel like bucked up, I'll go into Mr. Simon's office and say, okay, tell me what's the greatest things that we're doing right now? And he'll come up and he'll rattle off like three or four different scores that we're just doing tremendous. And, uh, and I like that. By the way, we all need to look at the camera and wave to Phyllis, who, uh,
Phyllis!
Was watching, and she has, she sent me a note and said, um, that she, she can't hear Pat, Linda or Sandy. So she said, she says, can't hear into the microphones on the, on the things.
How's Phyllis? Gee, there's the episode.
Hi, Phyllis.
But, but that, that is, I think, the challenge we have. We know we need it, but, but where do we, you know, in our budget, we've been so good about trying to be scalpel.
Phyllis, you are a sick retired woman, if you're watching this.
Besides that, it's a need, you know, we didn't, we weren't able to pass that referendum. And I think because we didn't articulate our needs clearly enough to the community, um, so.
And, and there is, and, and in that, articulating it to, to the community, those districts, and there have not been many, but that got, whether that be a half penny sales tax or, or some other type of mechanism, had things like, um, their foundation, their educational foundation or a PAC group help fund that message so that it wasn't simply the board members. And it was a very specific. Right. Flagler got what's the equivalent of roughly sixty million dollars over the next ten years.
And don't forget we're all.
And they, theirs was on technology implementation. And that was what they sold it, I mean, everywhere you went, it was on technology implementation. And that was tangible to the community to say, our investment, this is where it's going, so.
I think, um, to go back to this, updates on accomplishments, needs and expectations, it, it also is an overlap into the agenda. So the agenda can be shaped around this format, so to speak. What were our goals, what were the strategies?
Talk about them every month?
I think that's a great idea.
We have to have a starting.
We do that with, um, our, with our money that we get donated. Maybe one thing is, is to almost add on there, something on that.
Updates.
You know, achievement updates, you know, district achievement updates.
And it could be a reflection from the previous motions that have passed.
Sure.
So that we can bring those forward. So it would turn into a matrix of what, what's out there for action follow-up? And then what was the action that was taken and what were the results? So we, we would be able to see a visual of, of our accomplishments as a board.
That's a good idea. You want to step that up?
Well, give me a step up with the district goals and we'll move forward. It's, we'd rather tie it in as district goals.
You know, if you look at the agenda, 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 we used to have all of our items categorized by goals. If you look, you probably didn't notice this, because we don't pay a lot of attention to this, but.
We do like that, we do see that.
So those are the strategic goals.
And I really do like that, and it ties in perfectly.
And then, and then our, our, we try to. And then, and then our, our, we try to make our um, agenda requests be reflective or inclusive of some of those goals. Or we say, you know, if they're just operational or operational, it's okay, they don't have to be a strategic goal. So that would be a good place to, to start.
Okay. Isn't there a place under for follow-up? I think there is, isn't there?
No.
No. That's the only modification that we need to take place. So you've got the tool there, we just need to tweak it.
All right. Um-
State and district data?
Yeah, that's where we are. State and district data, student performance, HR reports and monitoring the results.
Well, the HR reports are missing again. We kind of got away from that.
And monitoring the results.
HR as in the employment?
Yeah, you know-
You're sure we asked that during the golden rod, kind of a-
No, this is different. This isn't the recruiting, you know, because anything changed when the budgetary items change. And we went from having not enough teachers to too many teachers applying for jobs. But we used to ask about recruiting efforts, um, how many new teachers, what was their level of expertise? You know, who, who happened, then we tracked them and see how many teachers left, why did they leave, how long had they taught? Um, and we'd also, um, it's hard to do this sometimes, but you know, you try to see what the connection is between training and experience and, and student performance. You know, and what we learned from that. You know, and we find, I think, that when we hire more experienced teachers, sometimes that state bring in great ideas of training and techniques. I know they were crazy at um, Rock Crusher when Nancy Simon was there, was two hundred teachers from Michigan. I forget what they did, but they, I think they were kind of like the essential question people. They started a lot of that and they went on, they trained, and it was so successful that she had them go on and train people all over the district, and that's just Michigan training.
The only thing that we always have to be cognizant, and I mean, I can see one, why you have them, is we've got less personnel these days to do those, so those reports. So it's like, well, I'd love to have some of that.
Is it of any value to us? Does it change what we do or does it not change what we do?
I walk upstairs and see fewer and fewer people around and they're just empty desks, so.
So, is, why, why not make somebody do that?
Human resources has to drive certain reports anyway. I think giving them an opportunity to share and then feedback and then, again, back to that initial thing that we were talking about, when it comes to managing discussion and developing consensus to ask for more information, I think that's when we would ask for more information. We'd all agree that we need it. But in the meantime, listening to the HR report in a timely fashion on our calendar, you know, if that's something that we need to look at, where will it fit for, to give them an opportunity to, to share? How many positions are full-time, who are full-time substitute teachers?
Right.
How many positions have highly qualified teachers in the core subject areas? So we could get that kind of data that really truly would help us drive decisions and certainly help us develop um, budget priorities.
Yeah, you know, it's funny, I, I had made a note on my agenda summary, bring it up, and I forgot at the end of the meeting. Um, there was an interesting article, I believe in this month's American School Board Journal where it talked about, it talked about how do you-
And she brings us copies of this too.
How do you um, address absenteeism? So what they said was, they hire two subs, two full-time subs to be full-time employees every elementary school. So that, those elementary, we've talked about doing that before. So that every school has somebody that knows their practices, knows the curriculum, knows their students, and if they don't have to have a classroom that they have to go into that day, then they go and they assist them on the other classrooms. So they said it has raised the level of performance dramatically. Somebody made a comment in Sound Off the other day, uh, I don't know if you saw it, and someone said, well, I know why the, the school grades went down because the, the teachers are always gone and there's always a sub in the classroom.
That's so bad, yeah.
You saw that? Yeah, so I don't know where that information, but it would be nice to have that feedback, you know? And we've talked about trying to do things that promote less um, professional development during school day. And I think this year actually is a half-day, what's coming up is a result of that. So we really need to monitor how that works. You know, both professional development wise, but parent and student pickup wise. Um, so there's a lot of things in that HR area that we do need to start talking about again. How's the HR?
By the way, this is just a, a, a place I wanted to insert. We all probably got emails about our ethics training that we have to have. And I think it's interesting that it goes all the way up to the lieutenant governor. Has to have their ethics training, to which, mouthing off to my wife, I say, can you believe that we're gonna have to do that? And we're not gonna have other training? To which, I got kind of a, a very nasty response of, really? And did you have to now take the new ESE training that DOE is requiring every teacher to take? This goes back to the HR comment. I guess we're gonna have to provide, or, or each teacher is going to have to take so many hours now of ESE training?
That HR will get all that, please. Oh, Lord have mercy. This came from the state?
This came from the state.
This came from the state, thank you.
So, I'm assuming, of course, this means no more money, I mean, no money that's coming with this mandate again.
We got a bunch of money that's from the state.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, see, that's, that's the thing that makes me crazy, is state mandates that are unfunded.
Well, in this case, it's not the legislature, but I believe it's DOE.
I don't care.
We need to make sure we tell the legislature too, though. Here they go, the rulemakers that are, are, are doing this, so.
And I do want to-
So I do, I do see where the HR issue, I do just think we have to, as we ask for other things, we've got to be cognizant of those departments that we have rubbed Peter the paint.
Okay, school board goals.
Wait a second, can we put HR issues then on the November workshop? And then-
I don't see why not.
And then we'll develop questions that I have written down here, which is um, highly qualified teachers, permanent subs, and other substitutes, absenteeism, professional development, the feedback on all-
In November?
Yeah. Was there any other ideas?
Lenny was gonna bring a list of all professional development for half-days.
Okay.
Let you know what schools were doing. She can bring it back.
Great. All right, what about school board goals?
School board goals.
And goal setting.
That was another one of my picky-dilloes, I guess. Um, because in the past, we've had superintendents who looked at the district's strategic goals as goals that should be universal to everybody, including the school board. Of course, we would work on accomplishing the goals, so much of the goals were not our work. Um, and, and as we walked through um, a lot of the stuff with Susan Lattick, it became clear that the school board, we have different roles and responsibilities than anybody else in the district. And so we should have our own, as a board, goals. So we've had a couple sessions where we walked through um, goal-setting session. The last one we did um, with Tina Pinkston was part of our master board. I don't remember how long ago that was. I should have asked when they supply us with that sheet. Um, yeah, you know what, maybe next time they can bring it to us. And I think we ended up with like two or three goals. One of them that we had a story on was Tina Lee's, and we actually closed that one down because we said, we really think we've accomplished that goal.
Was that Tina?
I think so.
I don't know.
I thought it was Tina.
I think it was Tina.
Maybe she got a final loss.
Maybe.
I'll be fine. One of the other things that we had done, and again, you know, we have a bird's eye view that other district administrators don't have. You know, a district administrator isn't gonna make a goal for all the other administrators or a high school principal isn't gonna make a goal for the other high school principal. So we have sort of a unique perspective in that um, ours is more global, I guess. And so one of the first goals that we had, we started off with a hundred percent graduation rate. And then people said, well, you know, you're never gonna get to a hundred percent graduation rate. Isn't that ridiculous? So we changed it because we realized that really the graduation wasn't as important as completion of their programs, whatever it was. So when we, when we went to that goal, the hundred percent completion of students' goals, and because that includes third grade and, and-
Tenth grade.
Tenth grade. The conversation in the district started to change. And at the individual school levels, they started to talk about what can we do to look at increasing our, our completion rate, and especially at the high school level of the graduation rate. Um, and one of the pieces of information that we found by kind of just talking about this was, actually it was Janet Mulligan, who was a guidance counselor, or she was AP. She was a guidance counselor at-
She was an AP for a while.
Okay, at Christopher High School. Um, and I was on the advisory council at the time and I remember her coming with her, with her book and saying, you know, she said, we have two hundred fifty graduates. But she said, this class started off at four hundred, where did they go? And we started asking the question, where did they go? Nobody even asked that before. And she just noticed it from looking at her book and noticing how small the graduating class was when the ninth grade class, we really hadn't been paying a lot of attention. There was a lot of assumptions about where the kids went. And when she went back and looked at that data, she was surprised to find that the majority of the kids got lost in ninth grade. That if you didn't, if you made it past ninth grade, you were probably gonna stay. And so that's when our schools came up with the ninth grade academies. Um, it was also the time that um, what's that guy's name, um, Rigger, uh-
Rorales, Dr. Daggie.
Yes, Daggie came up with the relationships and the rigor. And so that became the focus at the high school at the time, was the relationship part. And we found as a result, that our graduation rate went up, the ninth grade, stayed in the ninth grade really went very high. In fact, Mrs. Himmel said, that she said she, any kid that was gonna graduate, they were gonna have to come talk to her first. You still talk to those kids? It's amazing, the impact, just by us setting a goal of a hundred percent completion rate, the impact that had, even though we gave no direction of how to do that.
Just do it.
Our expectation. And, and it had amazing results. So I think the school board setting goals, we all have really, I think, felt that's really important. And we haven't gone back and revisited them and updated them. I see it's on the calendar for February? Our goals?
Last time we did it.
Okay.
It's been a February, February.
But we didn't do it last February.
We haven't, it wasn't done this year.
Yeah, we didn't do it this year because we were on, on, because we lost our school board member.
Oh, that's when it was, that's right.
Yeah, so we kind of didn't know what to do.
Yeah, because it was before Bill.
Yeah, it was a year before. So that's something that we-
I think we put it on February thinking that's when we were gonna do it because of the election in the timeframe.
Yeah.
Okay. But anyway, that's a little background information on what that's all about. And I know that not every school board has their own individual goals. They look at their goals being the same as the district, but then everybody gets kind of disconnected from that sometimes.
So we've got a goal-setting session set for February? All right.
And I would like to ask if, if no one has any objection, is can we move at least the portion of that upstairs where we can have that? Because that, when we're up there, it just, we get into a very good conversation as opposed to sitting like we are here.
Who do you all want to purpose on then?
Who do you recommend?
Can I back up with this before we determine who? I'm questioning the, the, and looking at what's happening with schools. And teachers are being asked right now to establish their goals for the academic year. Um, most of the teachers probably already have their academic goals turned into their administrative now. And I'm wondering, with our goals, what is the purpose for making it in February?
I think because we have an election every two years. And so if a new board member comes on in November, you know, if you have one meeting in December that you attend, really, so you're very new to even the district issues as far as understanding them, if you haven't been part of the, of the, of the conversation before. And I guess we figured, February might be the first time that I can do a brand-new board member, might have enough time under their belt to be able to contribute and feel like they weren't like-
But we also didn't have all the data, because we were, we had ragging data, unfortunately. In high school, we didn't have some of the high school data.
That was still maybe something we had in February. Sometimes it might because it's a whole of the calendar. So we can, we can make, I think we've done them in August, we've done them in all different times.
But that's a good question, Sandy. Thank you.
Back to what, what are you gonna use to define the outcome? How are you gonna measure your effectiveness? And it all comes back to, is the goal gonna be tied to the district's goals? Or are we gonna go off of what the school board parameters are and try to identify? The one that jumps out to me that we do have control over, they can help drive student achievement, is policy.
Yeah, we, and actually, we have a goal of policy, but we, we have a solution of policy, which will, I think, is our list.
Um, yeah, because policy is a-
It's a big piece of what we have, we truly do have control over. The rest, and we're ambassadors, we review budget, we're so um, dependent on staff for their expertise and knowledge to help guide us. And we are coming to the table with different expertise. And with that, we, as a body, make a decision. But what we really truly as a body have control over are policies.
So did you have that, can you pull that up or you can not pull it from where you sit? Our last, um, our board goals? I can try. Okay. So, so, so are you saying that um, you'd like more discussion?
Looking at what the, if we're gonna be establishing goals.
Well, I think, I think the question maybe, I'm, I'm not sure.
Well, in September, we've got the second part of um-
Which is common core.
Yeah, our common core.
But you know, we have this afternoon that we spent, you know, maybe on, maybe September, but we should do this review our goals, how about we do that? Is that VR, is that maybe?
Yeah.
But then- Can you say review our goals, are you, are you saying?
From the last, from the goals that we had sat down, yeah.
Okay.
And see if there's any that we need to just like push aside, ones we, that are irrelevant now, and then maybe ones that needed to be updated or added, new ones altogether.
And see where we're at in there?
There you go.
Okay, we'll do that in September. Uh, does that take care of goals progress and goals accomplishments? Review policies!
Okay. September for goal-stating, you said? Well, it's um, we review-
Just review our school board goals.
Somebody talk about how we review our policies now.
Well, that, and that was like, because I, as a new board member, that, and I think that's, I, I think, and Ms. Balfour, I'm not trying to speak for you, but I will tell you, as a new board member, it's probably the piece that you first, as a, as training, the first thing they'll say is, sit down with your policy man. And, you know, and so, so you start going through it and you go, why do we have that? Or why do we do that? And why is it this way? And why is it that way? And, and of course, I'm, as a learner, I love going and asking those questions and figuring out. At times, there's been an answer of, and this one won't surprise somebody, but, well, we wrote the policy that way because, because I like, I want my parameters. I wanna know, this is where they are, and be, but Spike would tell us. And I've learned this, Spike still lives here.
He certainly does.
He, he lives on this board. And when you go to the Florida School Board Association, they give the Spike Fitzpatrick Award to the best respected school board attorney in the state of Florida. Um, but often, there will be an explanation, a story, an anecdote and an information. And I'll, a lot of times I walk away, oh, okay, now I understand. Um, there's also been times that we go and, and we've, we've all been said, we made that policy, but I don't know that it works today. Or I don't know that we're following it. Or um, we all kind of thought, yeah, we probably should update that. Job descriptions are another one, because those are part, really part of that piece. And um, Ms. Deutschman has taught me that if, you know, kind of speak now or forever hold your peace on that, that's our time. Because the superintendent, whoever that person is, they can put whoever they want in there as long as they meet that job description. It doesn't matter whether there is whoever we think, whatever we think, the courts have made it clear, just cause means they meet that job description. So that's our opportunity when we do that. And I remember thinking first, man, that really is into the minutia, these job descriptions. Um, but I, I valued it and valued it a lot more just to say, yeah, it's like, you know, well, what, is that your job? Is that your duty? Is that still how we see that?
It's your expectations, what level person you-
Absolutely.
That goes back to the discussion last week, you know, they will be here, um, when the attorney talk about um, supplements. Was that a big job description? Well, that is part of the job description, if you have to justify.
The expectation that those do that work.
So that's, that's another area that we need to look at, to prosecute.
So those, those are things.
And goals.
Yeah, here's how we review the policies though. The chairman sits on the policy informs committee, they meet every month? The chairman sits on the Policy Informs Committee, they meet every month?
Yep.
And they have now cycled through, every policy gets reviewed every three years, on a routine basis. So there's those policies that go through that review. Are these still valid? Has the statute changed? Do we still do this? And then we also employ a company.
EMC.
EMC, a company that sends us updates and changes to policies as required by changes in statute language.
Like we got today with the...
Yeah, like we got today when they set up this commissioner of agriculture, something. Changes name, or the Department of Agriculture, Consumer Affairs, or the Department of Agriculture. So those we do routinely. And then when we have, the job descriptions mainly are, that we kind of fuss over, are the administrators. We'll look at the qualifications, years of expertise, what kind of education do they have, what kind of experience do they have, what do we expect? This is two years, truly two years, just anywhere, in any administrative level, or do we need very specific experience in a very specific way? And we typically change those job descriptions, and sometimes we change them when they, when we somehow, why does it come to our agenda when we're having a new position open, or closing one down, or changing them, or just tweaking them a little bit? And it is our opportunity to say...
The last many years, it's usually been that we had two people in it. Now we've got one, and we're rewriting them to include. And it's been to say, well, we're gonna pay you five cents more, but we're also going to...
So we send those back. We have a discussion about what we, the changes we say that are important, we'll send it back to Policy Informs. Policy Informs will rewrite that policy and then bring it back to us. The other thing that we've done that we think is failing, and I think that was what I did one year, that ended Spike, Ms. Himmel's making this joke about her games, this is during the Kelsley, it was you two, I think. We had gone to a training called, the thing about the fish, they were doing it here in the district, so. Fish, fish group to fish, or whatever.
From Seattle.
You know, with throwing the fish and all that, okay.
It's all about the attitude.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Enjoy your job when you're solid fish.
So they have all these fish over here in E S D and in H R, they had an egg, so I said, "Okay." And our mission, what? And services. Our mission, according to me, was that we were going to divvy up this policy manual, and each one of us was gonna take a section, and we were going to read through it, and then we were gonna come together in a workshop, and we were gonna talk about the policies that we ran, and if there was any that we thought needed, because Spike used to do that. Because if you're those board members, you probably need to be more intimately connected together and understand them, and have our own little, you know, twist on things if we think they're not effective or not accurate. So in order to kick this off, the warming, what'd you call it, the warming? The warm-up, we had the thing with the fish. Carol says, "You're not gonna make me play games, are you?" Ahhh! Oh geez, so this isn't going very well. It went worse, it kind of, it was, it wasn't good.
It went down.
Downhill from there.
We did, we said, "I made you all do that, bless your hearts."
That was in the basement, wasn't it?
It was terrible, it was a disaster.
I don't know.
So we said, "Okay, we don't do this anymore." And so I think that's when we ended up hiring some solos. Originally, we wrote our entire policy manual, because a lot of it needed to be updated. Because Spike would sit there, go through it sometimes, and have to update all the statutes, but take them forever and cost us a fortune. This comes, this is for a lot of school boards in Florida, so you're familiar with Florida statutes. So we've kind of gotten out of the role of picking the policies, other than if there's a burning issue.
Something else, you need a policy.
And sometimes there, and I know when I, right before I came on, was the student distribution policy of the territory. Because there had been the issue of stacks of, you know, stuff was going out to students, and it was either becoming where we had full-time staff member reviewing it, or we didn't allow any of it. And so there was the, and then there is equal access laws that come into play.
The what?
The equal access laws.
Oh, equal access, yeah.
And so, and I value, this is where I go back to my value of each person on this board, because I have my own view on this. Pat has a view that's gone longer than mine has. I'm still thinking, "Well, what the Little League and the Boy Scouts have their, you know, brochure." And Pat's like, "Yes, but remember, now we also have the WICAN groups that can advertise, and the..." You know, and so this, it creates good conversation. And then came along the issue of the constitutions. And the issue became...
What'd be wrong with handing students a copy of the constitution?
And a question, the answer is, there'd be nothing wrong with that, except that it had an individual groups adhering to it, advertising on the cover. And so the issue became, well, then what happens when we have the Rainbow Coalition, that they wanna hand out the constitution, and they can wrap it, the cover, in whatever they so desired? And do we open ourselves up? And then, of course, because the first thing is, we all said, wait a minute, every one of our, you know, our textbooks, our various textbooks have them, our libraries have them, our, you know...
But we had to address that policy.
And so we had to address it.
We had to change the policy, because we used to let anybody distribute anything, and the teachers used to say, "I gotta put ten things in everybody's, I can't do that anymore."
So that's where that...
You go back and you rely on your policy. This is our policy, this is what it says, this is what it means, and you know, we can't make an exception for you, we make an exception for everyone. So that's where the policy drives your decision.
And yeah. And that's where those...
Sorry, no go.
You know, there's no question that, and it's no surprise that I, you know, have wanted and have driven, tried to drive, and actually, Ms. Deutschman was doing it before I was here, the use of individual technology by students.
I'll just pull someone's story today about the kids left abandoned in the front classroom at school.
Well, and so basically, what I'm saying is cell phone usage in the schools. And we've, and I say "we" have come a long way, and not always have we...
That's a point.
Yeah, I mean, we had serious discussion, and Ms. Powers had some very valid concerns, still has very valid concerns. And I had my position, and we've come together, and we've, that was one of those policies, we started out with a policy, and committees and policies, and we scrapped the whole thing by the time we got done, because so much of what we'd written changed already by the time we got through that process, that then we started realizing, okay, how do we provide, and this is that careful part of the policy, how do we provide a policy that also does not tie our hands in one direction, and now put us doing something or permitting something we don't want done?
Yeah, and I definitely understand where we need to tread on the line.
Yeah, no, that's what I mean, so that's where...
Looking at, going back to the strategic, the district goals, and understanding the long-range plans with the state statute requiring implementation of certain initiatives, I think taking that and helping identify the top priorities in policy review and maybe policymaking, let that be the foundation to start dialogue. So whatever that happens to be, out of all of those mandates that are driving the budget and the...
Well, those I think we're doing through a contract, right?
Yeah, a lot of them are statutory, you know, some of our policies are statutory in these days, you know? And one of the other things is finding use in policies, and you don't want your policies to be so specific that someone's gonna sue you.
Well, I definitely, I can totally understand that.
And we try to bring two or three policies every workshop, perhaps, for review, and then, and sometimes it's something minor, sometimes it's major, but even besides the one, I'll just get statute on it.
And I would really say, if you have something too that you start to seize, sending to, and I would really say, you know what, even if, sometimes it's a discussion that, again, you're coming quickly out of the classroom, that we may all just, we're not, we're not seeing it, or we didn't see it. And it's a great time to say, "Hey, has anybody looked at this policy of later? Explain to me where we're at." And then maybe something we really need to review of it.
We get to see each other's perspective, and then take the approach of policy to then we have the input.
Looking at what we're trying to accomplish here as far as developing procedures. So in this category, review of policies, so are we agreeing that, at this point, we're gonna let the superintendent drive the agenda, looking back at our board, about when policies are reviewed? With the exception of, when we come up with something that we feel is critical to bring to the table.
The routine ones, they're cycling through, they're numbered, but they're not scheduled.
And three or four came through today.
The non-routine ones, the superintendent brings to us because she wants to make changes to the policy. And then normally, I don't, you know, it's been a long time since I recall, any of us created a new policy.
And that can be done at any time?
Yeah, sure.
The only, the only one that I would say I created it by any stretch, but I think the technology piece really came, but it came out of, again, a need. It really wasn't like Thomas wanted. It became out of a, listen, we were brought in this, we need to have a review of this. That included both students and staff, and how do we address that? So those things, I think, came, that's probably, to me, the biggest creation that, as a board, we've done.
Well, see, when one board member pitches a fit, then we get a policy.
So at this point, so I'm making my own notes here in this little box, I'm gonna make sure. So is it correct, then, that the entire policy is reviewed every three years by independent agency, called EMC?
No, no, that is done separately.
EMC sends.
The Policy Informs Committee and the school board reviews every policy every three years.
So where are we on the cycle of review?
You'll have to ask Chuck Dixon, but...
Is he the facilitator?
Sandy, here's what's happened. For years, after we sat down in the room for two days and went over board policy as four fingers, the year it really never got moving forward. So several years ago, or a couple of years ago...
It came out of master point.
Yes, and I said to staff, "We need to start bringing two or three policies." And not that I could have fun those two days, but I would never want the board to have to sit there. It just got to be...
It was such fun. You missed it.
We tried to bring them, and he's trying to get it on a sheet where it says, "Okay, three years, that one should be done." And we keep going, so if you see something, you just...
If you look at the bottom of the policy, I don't have the one that we just approved to update it, the bottom of the policy has, the statute, it has...
Here you go. I saw it, it's a great tool of a...
It has when it was revised. So you'll always go, when you look at every single policy, well, when's the last time it was touched and whatnot?
And in case you don't know, it is only digital. So going to the...
But what if it's a paper book anymore?
I don't think we've had a paper book in a while, it's only...
Oh.
It's only, because it changes so often.
Good, because Pat can't hand me a fifth of it.
So I'm constantly going to the webpage, searching it, using particularly the search feature, and putting in a word, and you know, I mean, you put in a word like parent, and there might be, you know, thirty policies that come up, and I'll go through them sometimes one by one on that.
Well, it's going away, at this point, looking at this page, we've gone through two, how many pages? Four pages.
Yeah, the other one was these stories, you want to leave this, or Mike's back?
Yeah, because I'm looking, I don't know how you have been able to type and keep up with the conversation for this much time. I gotta give it to you now, that's amazing, and I'm watching you just...
Because we've got one more thing on this page, should we do the one more thing? A board is a learning community.
And one thing, just on policies, because we talked about policies, we talked about...
Are you going back to policies, are you?
Well, just because, because we're gonna move off of it. Policies and job descriptions, because those kind of, I think, fall into, again, that same category that we do. The other one is agreements. And one of the agreements that is a huge issue, and I would, or a huge mound of legal documents, is our interlocal agreements between our other sister government agencies. And I would encourage you to make some time, maybe sit down with Chuck, he can both show you some of those, talk to you about it. Those are ones where there is, I think it's not this thick, the interlocal agreements are about four inches thick. Many of them have expired or are out of date, and yet they are sometimes still the perceived agreement. They are everything from the diving board at bicentennial pool, to the distribution of materials, to the light bulb on the third floor of the, you know what I mean? They are, there is an interlocal agreement, and a page sometimes for everything. They are not really master ones. And so a lot of times, there is discussion that takes place of, oh, we're wanting to do this, we're needing to do that. Impact费's become a very regular one, because there is, there's several pieces to the impact fee ordinance. All of those have interlocal agreements connected to them, with responsibilities back and forth. A lot of times, it'll be something that we won't know about till, there's usually either an issue, or there's a change we need to make. So those are ones that I would just tell you as a board member, they're ones, Chuck Dixon is the person I would, I would say, you know, get with superintendent, say, you know, if you can set up a meeting with him and do that, because that's a, it's a, yeah, it's a really good thing to go, "Oh, okay."
Appreciate that tip.
So, I'm sorry, but I just wanted to add that.
All right.
I appreciate the tip, and I definitely appreciate the seasoned board members coming to the table here today to get us all on the same page and try to unite the board. I know I'm a new kid on the block, I've been around the block, and I definitely recognize the fact that there's always an opportunity to polish up a machine and make it move it more.
We all need it, we all need it, Sandy.
I really appreciate this time.
All right. One last thing, board is a learning community, I think we are that, but...
We are that. I guess the question was, making sure that we get information about professional development opportunities. We got invited to Max Thompson last year, but there's stuff that goes on that we don't know about, especially the COVID pandemic. We need, you know, we need to be kept posted on what's going on, and then if we go to something and share it with each other, to set aside that time, so that we all have the same information. It's important.
All right, Mr. Heron, I'm gonna let you speak. You have three minutes. Come to the podium, and understand that there is no public input, but since you fall on a card, you may speak.
Okay, thank you. First of all...
And I hope your visitation here was enlightening.
It was.
Go ahead.
It really was. But they even sacrificed a goat just because of... Mr. Kennedy, my name is Quentin Heron, and you weren't here last time, I don't know you personally, but nonetheless, I wish to extend my condolences and loss to your father.
Thank you, sir.
The last board meeting was suggested by members at the meeting, me, myself, and Mr. Clotter. And he and his staff did indeed give me time, they were most gracious and patient with me. And it wasn't long before we realized that we're all singing from the same songbook, albeit some of the different songs. I am now aware of some of the problems that this school board faces, as does the school board across the state and across the nation. And I have some thought about that, since the Department of Education was established by, by somebody, Peter Farmer. It has been my opinion that by design, the state of education in this nation has been on the decline. And what has happened is that when the federal government seizes our property via taxes, they, they take these billions and billions of dollars, then they say, "Okay, now we're going to give it back to you, after we deduct our administrative fee of over hundreds of million of dollars, but only if you do what we tell you to." And therein lies the problem. The states want what is rightfully theirs, so they have bought into this condition. And initially, it wasn't so controlling as it was now, and now it's getting to be quite a problem, it's morphed into the present system of control. As I have pined to Mr. Clotter and his staff, in every government office, local, state, and federal, sit, pointy-headed pseudo-intellectuals, who sit around with theoretical ideas that don't work. What they do is they say, "Okay, if you support Joe, and he supports Mary, and Mary supports Bill, and Bill supports Sandra, and Sandra supports me, then we all can look so intellectual and advanced, and we justified our jobs." Look, I know it's a nice call, so this is Baby Ugly, but there are times when you have to identify a child that's not very attractive. Now, this brings me back to my question to last school board meeting. I'd like to repeat that question to Mr. Kennedy's benefit if I might. I asked if there, how many days school board members, since being elected to this school board, have spent in an academic classroom in a middle school or high school in Citrus County? Well, Ms. Deutschman...
You said it's a substitute.
Substitutes.
That's a different question.
Okay, well, I'm...
You spend a lot of time...
And you know what, I can say one thing is, I don't know, and you may not have been aware, but prior to me being elected, and don't take this away from this time for me to say, prior to me being elected, I spent the year prior to that, the school year prior to that, in substituting in the classroom. And I did that because my wife, who is a twenty-two-year veteran in the school system here, basically told me that while I may know a good deal about business, and while I may think, which she tells me when she comes home, I have no clue till I did that. And while I did do that, she will then repeat that, "Well, that was easy, since it was a teacher that gave you the instructions and the plans to do that, and you got a break when I wouldn't." and the, the plans to do that and, and you got a break when I wouldn't. So I did spend time, but of course, and I will tell you, I've got a lot of kids that have asked me, you know, Mr. Kennedy, when are you coming back? And of course I have to say, we're not allowed to while, while I'm that because unless you're donating your time, um, that. Now, if you don't know, and, and a lot of the board members and staff know, I spend about two to usually four days a week in the school systems.
Yes, sir.
Um, visiting the schools. Cause I love doing that. But you know what? That's just my style. Cause I know that there's some board members up here that spend a great deal of that same energy researching the information we need in other areas. So, but that, that's my answer and, and I'll give you back your time.
Well, uh, when I asked you a question initially, I exempted Mrs. Balfour and I would have exempted you also because I'm well aware of your background.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Now, the reason for that question, you made a comment that you couldn't do that. But just so you know, I have asked Mr. Bradshaw's office to respond. They have not as yet. So consequently I called the state. Florida statute 101234 through 39 outlines the requirements of substitute teacher. Okay? There is no law against you acting as substitute teacher. The Department of Education, Bureau of Teacher Retention, Educated Retention and, and Recruitment, and they got the law about this long. There is no policy that they publish that will prevent you from acting in that capacity. Okay? Now, the reason I asked that question is multifaceted. It, it seems like if members of the school board were to avail themselves in that capacity, then they could report on the problems of the curriculum. So when our superintendent goes to Tallahassee, they can say, for the gathering of eagles, the southern superintendents, okay? They can say, hey, what we did in Citrus County was this. And here are the situations that we ran into, here are the problems that we observed. So those, those superintendents may say to themselves, you know what? We're gonna try that. So next year when they come back, for now, now it's the second year, okay? They can be more than one lone voice in the world to say, this does stink. Okay? And that, that was the point of my question, to, to get the school board, I realize you guys are busy at Beach Ave on occasion, but to get you more involved in the, in the actual running of the school. And while I listened to your interaction a minute ago about what Mr. Kennedy said, the, the state through the government, through who, gosh knows who, is requiring more and more and more of you. And you consequently acquire more and more and more of the frontline classroom teacher. They're spending more and more of their time on administrative paperwork that they're allowed to have in the class. Okay? And it's a damn shame. Um, and it would appear to me that, you know, if, if, if we truly are concerned with the education of our children and we don't try to stop this downward trend in our educational process, then who will?
That's right.
If we don't start to do it now, then when?
You should have been here earlier.
We had a all-day conversation.
Yeah, I know.
Yes, we did, from nine o'clock until now.
A little sidebar. Do you have other meetings that are open to the public that someone may come in and just fly on the walls in the back corner and just listen to it? Cause.
Every meeting we have.
Everyone.
Every, every meeting we have. You're welcome.
Okay.
Let me also tell you that the law that prohibits us from being substitute teachers is the election law for, and it's also a law that prohibits an employee of the school system from doing business for the school system. So I could be a substitute teacher in Marion County, but I cannot be a substitute teacher in Citrus County.
I could be a licensed teacher in Marion County.
Yes. Many school board members in smaller districts teach at the neighboring district.
And, and this is a, referring to what?
It's like, um.
The state election law.
It's one.
The state election law?
No, it's part of the election law is built into that, but it has to do with employees of this, of your, employees of the school system can't do business. Like I, if I was a teacher.
Uh-huh.
I can sell this, my school paper. If I have a paper business on the side. I can sell paper to Marion County schools, but I can't sell it to my school district.
If she's teaching.
What you do is you, you buy a paper store and you have them sell it.
Yeah, we did that. And when she was a school board member, she could do business with every school district in Florida except for Citrus County. These are very clear laws that are code of ethics and conflict of interest. Um, and it's very clear, it's written in the statute, it's you, your spouse or your children, uh, in any relationship can't have any business relationship or dealings with your own employer. In this case, it's the school district. So.
I researched that, finally with the, with the, the actual.
Sure. And you have to ask a good question if you want to get the right answer. If you ask if we can be substitutes, that's a very different question of whether or not we can be substitutes within our own school district. That's a different question.
Um, I reviewed the tape before five times to find a measure of, on the right side here.
No, I mean, people that you ask for their opinion.
Okay. Um, I do want to leave you with one thought though. It might sound kind of, I forgive you, it sounds patronizing and pedantic, but, um, in, to my opinion, inside every person lives a coward and a hero. Which one lives will be the one you feed. Okay? And I think that we should stand up for these kids more than we actually are. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
And again, I, I want to thank Mr. Clotter. He, he's left here, but it was a very, very good and, and we didn't, we didn't kind of wear, wear of each other, you know, initially, but it wasn't long before we realized that there's a hell of a common.
Thank you. All right. I got a question for my board members. When are we going to do the rest of our strategic planning?
We'll do it at the next.
We just watch the camera.
September 10th?
Yeah, we can add it on to the end.
To the end?
If, if we can add it on to the end and let staff go or something and let's just work it off.
Is it a workshop?
Oh, right.
Is it a workshop? If you mind?
Okay, so that'll be September 26, 23rd, 20 something, 24th?
That workshop you had.
Yes. September 24th, Mrs. Burdarami, will that work?
Are we doing, what are we doing our homework here in forum project? September 10th?
September 10th. 5:30.
Our meeting day?
Yep. Does anybody have anything else for the good of the order of the board?
Who's checking this out?
Mine, from last, from yesterday's.
We were talking about H R, coming back, the things I said that I'm going to bring back to you all. So we'll get that ready. I will find out, I will, you know, you all tomorrow, we'll see how long it will go for me on the particular.
And I wasn't either. I just got lectured about that. I best not talk about what, what training that as a board member I had to go to when, when she had her own, that she was gonna have to go to with Thomas and.
E S O L, E S C.
I think it was E S C, some new, I think they got it from a union. I think there's an, actually you guys.
I can answer.
See, you can answer.
Answer for us.
I'm gonna help you. I'll just tell you, you know, it's informal. Um, before, in 2000, June 2014, after the, if you're renewing your teaching certificate, every teacher.
That's what it is.
Every teacher will have to have one course in E S C or what is it? The equivalent in professional development, 20 hours. And that'd be a requirement. Now.
And who dreamed this up?
What's that?
Who dreamed that up? Was that?
Legislation.
Didn't come from here?
No, it did not come from here. But it is, you know, it's just a mandate. So maybe a strong recommendation, those that are getting ready to renew their certificates, maybe I would courtesy, send them a notice and say, and I think we received that too. But, you know, if they renew before June 14th, they will not have to.
Aha.
But after June 14th, or June 2014, they will.
Okay.
There's a district or two who have.
I don't actually.
To get certified in E S C or take a course.
Well, I think what they're doing is they're gonna look at the inclusion and they're looking to replace that.
Hey, does anybody have anything else? No one has anything else? This meeting is adjourned.